I missed the lights, camera, action part. Anyway, there you go, Doris.
Well, I welcome everybody out to Carbon County Planning and zoning this afternoon and welcome our guests from the IT department for being with us this evening. It appears that all the members are here tonight with the exception of RD Campbell and he'll be excused. So, we'll do the pledge of allegiance and the flag's right behind Reed here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Did everybody have a chance to look at the minutes that we had from our prior meeting? Do we need to make any changes or corrections?
I'll make a motion when it is written unless somebody has some changes.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second. We approved the minutes. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, everyone.
And I abstain just because I wasn't here.
Duly note that Commissioner Miller missed the meeting and that we've got to talk to him about his attendance. The next item we have, which is pretty much a single item on the agenda for consideration, is the review and possible approval for recommendation to the Carbon County Commissioners for amendments to Section 5 of the Carbon County Development Code. Todd is going to give us a little bit of a briefing on this and then talk about the timeline and things and how this will work. So, Todd, I'm going to turn the time over to you.
Okay, so, last month, we had a public hearing and received comments on the proposed changes to our conditional use permit section of the code, Section 5.1. So, Krishnan and I went through some of the suggestions that were made and added a few items and then clarified a few other different portions of the development code. So, to begin with, we, in Section, we have the highlighted parts, what we changed. So, on the first page in Section 5.1.1 at the bottom, it says residential treatment facilities shall be deemed to be permitted, to be permitted uses in all zoning districts in which residences are allowed as permitted uses. And that's from state code. We, any residential treatment facility has to be allowed to be permitted at any zone where like, single-family houses are allowed, so that they have to be more or less permitted.
Does it define residential treatment centers?
In our, in the...
In the state?
In our, in our section of our code, it defines a treatment facility.
Are the drug rehab places in that?
Yes, they would be in there, yes.
Okay, but...
Good to clarify.
Yeah, there you go, thanks.
And then on the second page, the first paragraph, it says conditional use permit applications for other conditional uses authorized in a particular zoning district set forth elsewhere in the county development code shall be administered according to this section. So, everything will follow this section of our, of our plan.
That is kind of casual, in case, you know, in a certain industrial zone, it provides for a, a specific use that's not listed in there in 5.1.1. Well, it doesn't matter. If it's conditional use, it's to be, you follow this section.
Then, so, page two...
Just so that there's a default for all those funny things that don't fit in, right?
Yep. So, on, on page five in Section 5.1.7, land use authority, the first paragraph, we, we added the word "all," "all conditional use permits," except that the, okay, so I'll read, go from the beginning. The zoning administrator shall act as a land use authority with respect to all conditional use permits, except that the planning commissioner shall act as a land use authority to the following types of conditional use permits, and list all those. What were, the intent behind this is all the large-scale projects, the planning commissioners are going to approve. There's going to be some minor, small ones that myself, as a zoning administrator, will be able to approve as we follow all the conditions in the CUP. But the real minor ones for businesses that are already established, that are already in existence but need a CUP, we don't need to bother coming to you guys and having approval when we have the standards already set forth in this condition. But all the large-scale industrial projects, anything big is coming to you. So, and that's mostly what, what we have anyways, like the methane flare, that type of projects coming to you, the solar permits are all coming to you. So, the ones that we've been doing, more or less, will be coming to you anyway, just some smaller ones where we don't burden you guys, yes.
What about a gas well, when they come in and they want to drill?
Yep, they'll come for you for approval.
Do they come to us?
Well, it's a single gas well.
Oh.
I think if it's a, a single gas well, it will probably go to you, won't it, Todd? I mean, if it's a, if it's a big field development of numerous ones, I think that would be considered a large-scale project. But if it's just one individual gas well, I think something like that would probably just go to Todd.
Okay, that makes sense.
So, in essence, not everything is a conditional use because you are specifying uses that can just be delegated.
But he still has to follow the conditional, he will still follow the standards set forth in here, and he may impose conditional, conditions upon that approval, so...
But some of the benefit is, a lot of this can just happen quicker for businesses, so that we can be, you know, a friendly county to businesses looking to come to our area. We can streamline a lot of the normal processes that should just be templated, that should just be typical for what they're doing, and bring to the planning commission those items that really do need to become, come before a body of people.
Yeah. The one example I've used is when Carla Sakamano, several months ago, brought a business on Airport Road. We had to come get a CUP because it was owned industrial, went through the whole process and it took her probably four to six weeks with all the public hearings. That business was already used for like, a mine repair anyway, but because we didn't have a CUP on file, she had to redo it. Those type of ones, I'd be able to prove it. It's already been established and we would, we get through the paperwork and get her through and on our way using her business and not drag it out over several weeks. So, that's the intent behind it.
And you've, you've been, like, that next paragraph or whatever it is there says that the applicant could revise the application to matter to, and you've been doing that, I think, which is a good thing. You can coach the people through so that when it gets to this body or to where you could approve it, it's perfect, so to speak.
Yes, yep.
And, you know, if there's anything Todd thinks, well, you know, this is a kind of a sensitive one, I don't want to be the one, the sole person approving this, he can still say, "I have the authority to approve it, but I'm going to send it to the planning commission anyway." So, just so there are extra eyes on it.
And then, on that same page, towards the, the bottom, we added that the zoning administrator shall approve the application within 30 days, otherwise the applicant shall have the right to present the application to the planning commission for its approval. So, if I, if I'm taking too long, they can come straight, straight to you guys.
After 30 days.
After 30 days.
But what we didn't want is for them to say, "Oh, you took 30 days, it's automatically approved." No, now you can, now you can send it on to the planning commission. Is your remedy there?
We added some other verbiage on the next page for that paragraph. Says, "When considering an application, the planning commission may recommend to the applicant that he revise his application and that the matter be continued prior to a decision being made on the application. But the planning commission shall not continue the matter unless the applicant consents to a continuation."
And there's some, there's some state code provisions that state that an applicant is entitled to a decision from you. In other words, you don't have the right to table your approval as a planning commission. You can't, you can't, he's entitled to up, or an up or down vote from you under state law. So, years ago, I remember a few times the planning commission would table something and ask the applicant to go back and before they, before the planning commission recommended it to the county commission. I've done some research on that and technically, you can't do that. You can't table something unless they consent to it. You have to give it an up or down vote.
I have a suggestion there where you say, the applicant, that he revise, I wonder if we should say that they revise rather than he.
Well, it's not a, but it's a, yeah, we can, we can quibble over that, but "they" is not proper either, because that's a plural noun, right? So, yeah, I've heard it could be he or she, or, you know, you're supposed to go gender neutral now, right? Well, you still can go he, but maybe the more correct way would just to say that the applicant revised the application.
That's good. Krishnan and I had this conversation earlier. So, moving to 5.1.8, approval of conditional use permits, the first part of the paragraph defines how we may approve a conditional use permit by showing reasonable conditions that may be imposed. We add in the middle of the paragraph, the highlighted part, says if, if the reasonably anticipated detrimental effects of proposed condition use, conditional use cannot be substantially mitigated by the imposition of a reasonable condition to the, achieve the compliance with applicable standards, the conditional use must be denied. And I, you know that an attorney wrote it because I can't even read it correctly. So, more or less, if, if the condition cannot be mitigated by the conditions that we impose, then we can deny it. Other than that, if there's conditions we can put on the project, then we have to allow it. But if, for some reason, there's no way we can mitigate the problem, we can deny it. So, it's, from all the conferences and trainings I've been to, it's, it's pretty much, it's, it's rare that we deny a conditional use permit. More or less, they have to be approved because there's always a way you can find to mitigate it.
And this, that sentence was actually in a different section and I highlighted it, it was before you last time in a different section. I just highlighted it because I moved it into this section. Seemed to make more sense to go right here, as well as the next sentence, which was also in a different sentence, section. Conditional use permit shall be not be issued if the applicant has made a false statement in providing the information required. That was also in your last draft, I just moved it because it seemed like it better there.
And then we have, in Section 5.1.9, standards governing conditions to be imposed, and that the land use authority shall ensure that the conditions imposed are not capricious, arbitrary, or contrary to any precedent set by permits issued by the land use authority which are similar in use and zone unless such previous permits were not issued in accordance with the provisions and standards of this ordinance.
And again, that, that one was also in your last draft, I just moved it there because it seemed like it better right there. This 5.1.9 is talking about the standards of the conditions. In other words, what kind of conditions can be set?
And then throughout that, we, we went through, you know, all the governing bodies that can impose standards from the federal, state. Also, we go through and talk about other regulatory agencies, county conditions, other standards is outlined through there. So, we, we go through and say, these are the people who will, will, will accept standards from. You know, we want that, you know, be recognized and have some, some type of expertise in their field to say, "Look, this is how you're going to mitigate that portion of the, of the concern." And continuing that section, we go through and this is where a, a good addition to our, our CUP is just saying that things we can limit, that, you know, the, the working hours, you know, the dust, the parking, you know, we go through and list all those things that we can actually impose limitations on where before we didn't have any, it wasn't as clear and now we've spelled that out.
If you remember last time... Lena said, you know, she said, "Well, what about noise regulations?" Because of where you put noise regulations and light regulations, those can't be enforced. And I, I disagreed with her, but I, to resolve her concern, I moved, I removed, I moved those items into the same section as where we're talking about standards imposed by a regulatory agency or an expert. So, all standards, all, all conditions of a conditional use permit have to be supported by what's called substantial evidence. And, and we're saying, hey, if it's a, if it's a standard imposed by a regulatory agency or by an expert in the field, you can presume that that recommendation is backed by substantial evidence or constitutes substantial evidence. But then to satisfy Lena's concern, we said, "There may also be other conditions that need to be imposed just because they're common sense in that they help mitigate detrimental effects to the health, safety, and welfare of the population, and we want it to be possible to impose those." In other words, there might be a, a conditional use that comes in and it's not required to have a sight-obscuring fence, but based on the facts presented, you just know it's going to drive the neighbors crazy without one. And so, you should have the right to be able to say, "Well, this is common sense that it's going to bother the neighbors, we're going to require the fence," even though Dogham or the EPA wouldn't require the fence. So, Lena brought up what I think is a good point in that we ought to make it very clear that those things can be imposed as well if you have substantial evidence. So, I consolidated that, that part into the same section as the other part.
The next change we had is 5.1.11, compliance with permit after issuance, and this addresses the fact that within 30 days, they need to be, be in compliance with their CUP. So, that, that way, there's no questions of, oh, we've extended out months and years past. It's like, no, if you don't come in compliance within 30 days, we can, you're, you're just not in compliance, so...
We can start to revoke if you don't get it together, so...
And the planning commission, the last sentence, "The planning commission shall have the right to extend the term by which all conditions of the permit are satisfied if doing so will not materially affect the health and welfare of the general citizens in Surrey." So, everyone will have 30 days and if there's something else that comes up, we could work with them on that, but give them a timeline to get it done. And then the appeal, people can appeal the permit. Anyone who is affected, adversely affected, they have 30 days from the decision of the land use authority to appeal. That gives those people who want, who think we've made a mistake, gives them their, their opportunity. Then, in Section 5.1.16, it talks about how we go about revoking the conditional use permit, outlines that we have to give them notice in writing within 30 days, give them a time to be able to, to fix that. If they don't deal within the 30 days, then the planning commission shall give notice to the permit holder and have a public hearing and bring them and say, "You gotta take care of it."
Help me with an example there on where you say, "The holder of the permit required of the permit to attend a public meeting to show cause why the permit should not be revoked." Have we ever done that?
Sure.
And how does, so...
It's what you just did with the, not...
J and B.
J and B.
J and B.
Well, you made a recommendation to the county commission that the permit be revoked. So, basically, we're saying, you'll, you'll, you'll have an agenda item where you consider revoked.
So, when we do that, then is the public meeting when it goes to the commission for them to plead their case?
It'll go, it'll be just you guys now. So, they'll, you'll give them notice, they'll come here, and then they can explain, you know, why they haven't moved forward, why they're ignoring us, you know, those things so that they'll be able to have a chance to plead their case.
But you're only the ones to make that decision.
Whether it's justified or not.
Yep.
So, you say, "Look, we've given you 90 days, we've had you back here and we gave you another chance, this is the second time," you know, that kind of thing. We, we can see you're unwilling or, I think, the standard is whether they're unwilling or unable to come into compliance.
Yeah, I think the fellow that had the scrapyard done by Ray's just kept ignoring us as an example of how this is applied.
That's right. The only difference would be, you would be, you would make the recommendation to the commission, you'd be the group that actually revoked the permission.
You had your chances over, yeah.
Yep. And then the last sentence, "Only the planning commission shall have the right to revoke the conditional use permit." So, even on some of those smaller ones that I may, that I, I'll sign the, the conditional use permit and they're not in compliance, the only way that it can be revoked is, is from the planning commission. I can't do any revoking and that, you know, takes the burden off of me and people claiming, well, Todd's just going to, you know, give it and take it away. Well, no, it's the planning commission that's going to have to take it away.
You want them to come burn our house down instead of your house?
Yes. I'm already, yeah, I'm sure that, I'm already on several people's lists. And so, and then the, the paragraph continues on the backside, and that how the planning commission shall revoke the permit if it determines the holder of the permit is unwilling or unable to abide by the term, so...
And then we say, "And the conditional use shall immediately cease." So, that seems to be go without saying, but I thought in case we have to get an injunction in the court, we can tell the judge that, "Hey, Judge, the permit's gone, so the use cannot continue." I mean, one should follow after the other, but let's make that clear.
Yeah. So, those are the, the changes to that section of the code, to the conditional use section of, of the development code. The intent is to, like Commissioner Miller was saying, to hopefully expedite some of our CUP processes, so when businesses come to the community, they can get their permits and move forward. There's enough regulatory agencies on a lot of these large-scale industrial projects that between Dogham and EPA and everyone else, they'll have enough standards and we'll make sure that we're protected as a county, but to get our process done so they can move on to the next step.
The other, what I think will be an advantage is that this lets the county commissioners kind of be cheerleaders or supporters for businesses that might come into the county. And they can more openly advocate for the business and support the business coming in, and then they don't have to be accused of, you know, being insiders when it comes to giving approval for that business. So, this lets them really fulfill what I think is a, one of their most important roles of a county commissioner in a small county is to promote economic development. They can, they can bring those groups in, they can endorse them, they can support them, but then they don't have to be the ones to weigh the factors as to whether or not they're going to get a, a permit. And it really takes away conflict of interest for them by having an independent body make that decision. At least that, that's how I look at it. I, you know, I guess you could have...
No, I, I agree.
I think some folks might say, "Well, it really should be the commissioners that make that decision because we're talking about sensitive uses." But as Todd said, so many of these sensitive uses now are already governed by federal or state agencies, and what we do beyond that is really going to be putting minor things in, like requiring a fence here and there or a drainage plan and just more smaller things. So, you'll still play, there will still be an important oversight role for both you and Todd, but I don't see that role needing to be played, you know, whether or not a fence is put in, doesn't seem to be something that requires two separate bodies, you know, shouldn't have, shouldn't have to be both the county commissioners and you in deciding on what ultimately are going to be the, the more minor parts of letting a business come into town.
I know in the past, like Emery County, what I've heard, they have like, a small project exemption, a large project exemption, and you apply for one or the other and it gets approved rather quickly. And I know one of the oil companies that we, I did some work for, they were talking about coming to Carbon County, they said it's going to be a four or a five planning, planning, it's wanting a meeting where you have to come in four or five different times to get things approved, and it just drags on forever and they get a little frustrated, so I think this is a good idea.
Well, now, just from past exposure, and I'm looking at you, Todd, you work well with all those state and federal agencies and you're almost hand in hand when some of these larger scale things come about.
Yeah. Yeah, so, we're doing our best to get them moving along, so. Any other questions or comments on the proposed changes?
No, can we make a motion for the recommendation?
Yeah, a recommendation to the commissioners.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved to second, the Planning and Zoning Commission make the recommendation to the Carbon County Commissioners for the adoption of the amendments to Section 5 Carbon County Development Code. All those in favor say aye.
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 Anything no, don't hear anything, motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen. The next item is also yours, Todd, to give us a review on items and upcoming projects.
So, for next month, we're going to have at least two projects on there. The first one is Phase 2 approval for the Country Corner subdivision that Carla's doing in Carbonville. There's going to be five lots there in Phase 2 that she's going to come in for approval for. And then the other one is a concept approval for tiny homes outside of Schofield. So, a developer has come with a proposal, I guess several years ago, he was going to build condominiums, I think maybe in about 2008, 2009 timeframe. Because of the economy, that fell through. Well, now you have this trend of small homes, tiny homes, whatever you want to call them. And so, the impact's going to be the same, they're just going to be lots smaller homes that they're going to market and sell. So, the concept approval for that's going to come before the board in December.
Is that, just out of curiosity, is that going to be on the same parcel we brought to us before for the condo?
Yes, yep. Just north of Schofield Town on the east side of the road.
Yeah.
Yes, I think it's about a little over five acres. So, it seems something, we've had a lot of people come into the building department asking about how to build tiny homes and standards, and so, this is one of the things that they're going to try. And I think with the market, especially as the Wasatch Front grows, to have a, maybe a four or 500 square foot cabin, you know, closest Schofield, be able to come down from the Wasatch Front, have summer to stay and utilize our public lands is something that people are looking forward to and they don't want a, a ginormous cabin, just something to have a couple beds and a kitchen and go out and play. So, those are the two things that I know will be coming up on next month's agenda. Everything else, the other projects, I haven't heard anything on Elk Meadows, nothing's moving forward on that. Now, we're into November, so nothing's happened at all this summer. And the other one, oh, sorry, there's a third one. Dave Smith subdivision, south of town on Neuzen or Robertson Lane, either one, he's going to come for preliminary and possible final approval in December for his five lots. So, those three items will be on the agenda, along with Krishnan and I will be working on Section 2 of our development code, creating two alternate members for the planning commission that we'll have and have them attend, so if we ever have situations like we did last month, we'll be able to have a, a full, full quorum for it, so. And I think that also addresses our appeal authority in Section 2, and then we'll be working on section, our definitions in Section 9 and subdivision will be coming up in December and January. So, that's everything. I have any other comments or questions?
Anyone?
No.
Good job.
Would accept a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion. Or adjourn.
I'll second it.
Motion is second to adjourn. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay.